Absolutely, 100%.
What do you think?
Let's just go with it. If he comes, he comes in. Yep. He may have vacation basketball this week.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on with Mr. Ray, our April financial report.
Everybody in their board package should have the financial statements for general purpose school fund. Just real brief, BP is considered state funds. That's allocated based on ADM. It's coming in as allocated. Taxes are our local money. The line share is property tax, sales tax. We've adjusted the budget in prior months to reflect on the actual flow. So that's coming in as we expect. On the expense side, there's some expenditures that we've budgeted for that are not gonna happen this year. The access control system, I think, is gonna be something that maybe starts in July. So that money will actually go into next year's. The flooring at South Clinton will complete the South Clinton expansion. Once they get that finished, I expect that to be done in June. So that expense will hit this year and is in the budget already. And the expense for the sanitary sewer line that Joey has a sample of. I expect the majority of the completion to be done this year, so we'll recognize some of that expense this year and probably some of that expense next year.
What do you call that again, Tarzan?
Tarzan.
Tarzan. Federal projects is, remember, those are all reimbursement grants. We spend the money, we get reimbursed. We're at 45 days of what I call aged accounts receivable. That's about where we usually lie. I always shoot to try to get it into 30 days, but no more than 60. We're doing good there. Cafeteria fund, right now, we have a surplus of around $100,000. I expect to end the year. So we still have May, and we still have June, which is summer school at North, to book. But I expect to end between $90,000 and $100,000 surplus in the cafeteria fund. Any questions on the financial statements?
We were, I think I'm speaking for everyone, but you do an awesome job.
Oh, thank you.
We really appreciate you for all these numbers.
For a guy with no fashion sense, right?
Exactly.
Well, she said no sense. Didn't she say fashion sense?
No fashion sense. Stick to your numbers.
Clear that up. In the financial statement, if there's no questions, I've added a page for the cash position. A memo for myself. It's the last page in the financial statement section. Every month, I'm gonna report our cash position, what I've done. Kelly and I have opened up a CD with Knoxville Teachers Federal Credit Union for $250,000. ORNL Federal Credit Union for $250,000. And we have the LGIP. That's Local Government Investment Pool. We have $500,000 in there. That rate fluctuates, but for the month of May, it was 4.91%. The CD at ORNL, I think, was 5.1%. And the Knoxville Credit Union was 4.7 or 8%. The reason for the difference is Knoxville Teachers Federal Credit Union, if we want our money, they only charge two months of interest. That's a little bit of a lower rate. If we wanna get our money from ORNL, it's six months of interest. So they can pay a higher rate because the penalty to get the money out early withdrawal is more. We don't anticipate doing that because, as we're getting ready to see, we have $2.8 million in cash as of yesterday, sitting at Regions. And this is pulled directly from the bank state, bank. We have about $20,000 that sits at Knoxville Teachers Federal Credit Union for debit cards. And we use that, kind of like a credit card. And then cash with the city. Still, we have $2.5 million with the city. So that gives us total cash of $6.4 million, 6.5 if you want around it. Our insured balance is only $750,000. So our fund balance is only $5.3 million, plus cafeteria, so let's just say 5.75. We have more cash than fund balance. Well, how is that? It's the timing of property tax collections. They hit real heavy in January, February, March, and then they start to trail off. So right now, we're cash greater than fund balance. That'll even out and then reverse, and then it'll happen again. So that's normal for where we are at in the year. Any questions about what we're doing? I think I have, you've given me authorization to do one more CD or one more bank account for $250,000. I'm gonna do that as soon as we have the chance to sit down with somebody. That's on my agenda. And that's all I have for the cash position.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ray? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report for the month of April as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kay Kay Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Laurel Price?
Yes.
Joey Span.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to budget amendment number six.
Should have a memo that proceeds the detail of the budget amendment. I'll just go over the memo. In general purpose school fund, the bulleted items are additional, kind of the wrapping up the year, getting salaries and benefits adjusted. Sometimes we might expect to hire a teacher with, on step 20, and we hire a teacher on step five, or reverse. So sometimes we don't know how it's gonna play out until the year starts, and then pregnancies and interim placements happen. So there are some adjustments. Medical insurance, I noticed a trend that I was constantly having to increase our cost of medical insurance. It just seemed like every functional area I went to in the budget, I was like, increase medical, increase medical. Part of that, what I budget is, doesn't include an increase because I don't know what the increase is. We pay, for all practical purposes, we absorb seven months of an increase for the teachers. The way we, our policy is, when a teacher agrees to work for us, the health insurance rate is what it is, and we're not gonna increase it. Well, the increase is hit in January. Well, it wouldn't be fair to say, you agreed to work for us, and now we're gonna charge you more for health insurance. So we absorb that. That's where the most of that is coming from, and we're picking up spouses. But nothing unexpected there. The increase in custodial supplies is concerning to me. It's inflation. Plastic bags have doubled. I wanna reuse them. You all laugh, but.
Keep our schools clean.
Kind of kidding. Increase in maintenance repair services. I budgeted some money to try to figure out where we would stand on the wastewater line. I think the majority of that will be completed, as I said earlier before, January. And then we decreased some capital expenditures, the access control system, that we'll actually get to pushing into next year. Our fund balance, I kinda scheduled out where our fund balance. Sometimes we'll do a budget amendment, and we can increase expenditures and increase revenue to fund that. And sometimes we go to fund balance. So I've shown you where we are. We are, for the year right now, we are gonna be going into fund balance $390,000. That is about what we've paid this year for South Clinton. Remember, that crossed years. So that's, the reason I say that is, it's not unexpected. Nothing in this budget amendment is unexpected to me. Federal projects, various reclassifications, but there's no additional grant money that's come in. Cafeteria fund, we got a supply chain assistance grant that they just gave us, and we gladly accepted. And it was about $33,000.
Did you have to apply for that one, or did they just?
We just had to say yes.
And we said yes.
Yes.
And we said yes. We didn't really experience any supply chain issues with Airmark.
Sure you did.
Well, but we'll take the money. They got us on some other stuff, that, systems that weren't so good about starting seamless summer like we are. We kinda got penalized for that. We actually produced more meals during COVID, seamless summer, and the way they allocate commodities, they skipped that year. They said, we're not gonna use one. It would've helped us if they had used the COVID year for us, but they didn't. So I look at this as payback. Any questions on the budget amendment?
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number six.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kay Kay Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Laurel Price?
Yes.
Joey Span?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Every year, we have to extend our financial obligations so that Kelly can pay for bills that were accumulated in the current school year that carry over to the next fiscal year. So that's generally, happens every time, so I'll entertain a motion to extend our financial obligations.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our school board meeting schedule. I don't think there's any surprises in there. So I'll entertain a motion to approve our meeting schedule as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our 23, 24 annual agenda. I don't think there's any surprises or anything there. Does anybody have any questions regarding our agenda?
In July, is that two nights?
Yes, so Thursday night and Friday night.
Okay.
Yes. And we were able, no, I'd sent you all an email that we were on the waiting list.
We got in.
But we did, we did get in, so everybody is set to go for that.
The 21st and 22nd, I believe.
Okay.
The.
21st and 22nd, yes.
Yeah, 21st and 22nd. So the meeting doesn't actually, we leave on a Thursday evening and go up there because the meeting starts at 8 o'clock on Friday. So it's all day Friday. So it's all day Friday, and just in the morning for Saturday, yeah.
All right. See, we were to our annual agenda. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our annual agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on. Every year, we approve the Anderson County Health Department Dental Program and the Alliance Club for Revision to check our students there. I think both of those are great policies. Every year, I have to say that I am a dentist and work at the Health Department part-time. But however, it is a wonderful program for the children that will kinda be falling through the cracks that will not receive any dental care at all. So I will be voting yes, even though I am employed by Anderson County Health Department. I will be voting yes because it is a great program for the benefit of our children. Any questions or comments regarding approval of the Anderson County Health Department or Alliance Club? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on with our contract with Stellar Therapy Services.
So this, we are requesting approval for, for us to enter a contract with Stellar Therapy Services, and they are a third-party vendor where we can begin to collect money for our TinCare kids for receiving OT, PT services, speech services, and then also, we want to pilot a program at North first and try to recoup some of our nursing services. So Suzanne has worked hard. This has been several years in the making, actually. It has not been an easy venture to try to figure out the ins and outs, but there is quite a bit of criteria in asking for that reimbursement, so we want to contract with Stellar. They will handle all of our reimbursements for us, and then obviously, they will get a portion of that reimbursement, but the majority of it, what is the, what is the?
70/30.
70/30. So this is just a way, as you know, we are now employing our own OTA and PTA that are with Clinton City Schools. And so this is gonna be a way, since we are absorbing those salaries, of course, we are basically paying their salaries through Sidekick, through, you know, private agency, but this will be a way for us to recoup some of our funds for some of the services that we're providing students.
I do think, I think I saw in the, in the contract, it was based on collections.
Yes.
And not per child. So that way, we're not out any money until we technically get paid.
Costs us nothing.
Costs us nothing, so I thought that was a great addition in the contract.
So Suzanne will be our person who oversees that, since she is over special education and all of our special therapies.
You said that included speech?
It does. It, we are rolling that in. The speech and language teachers have to make sure that they've got, not only their educational license, but their practitioner's license as well, and there's some things that they have to do on their end. One has already gotten everything that she needs, so we'll probably go ahead and start with her. Our goal is to have the other two on by December, and we think we're on track to have the other two. So North, we will be able to go ahead. Drew's is ready to rock and roll with it, so.
They have to have their Health Department credentials to stay in addition to their education credentials. So there's been lots of kids to jump through in their work, and.
Is it just because they're working with the school, or this?
For them to be able to attend care, they have to have their credentials.
Okay.
That's where we are.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve contract with Stellar Therapy Services.
Say that three times.
Did I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our breakfast and lunch pricing.
I'll let Scott talk a little bit about how we came upon this decision, but as you know, we have to show that we're doing the annual increases every year. Scott has worked hard to kinda come up with what would be fair. We did decide not to go up on breakfast prices this year, as we just want to continue to encourage kids to come and eat a healthy breakfast, even though it was in the formula that we did need to increase. That, we might have to absorb a little bit of that through our fund balance, but we are suggesting an increase in the lunch. And so Scott, do you have anything else that you want to add to that?
Yes, sorry. What Kelly was referring to, like the mandatory increase in lunch pricing, it's called the paid lunch equity. And what the federal government, the USDA is trying to ensure that we don't subsidize kids, pay the kids, kids that can afford to buy a meal. We don't subsidize their meal with federal dollars. So we're required to charge a certain amount that is equitable with what we get from the USDA, unless we have a fund balance, which we do. And we can be exempt from the paid lunch equity tool. So we are exempt, but that generally is a 10 cent increase or more. But, you know, everybody sees the news about inflation. Airmark, and I think we have a memo in here about the Airmark contract that's gone up 8.2%. So I think we have a responsibility to, now that doesn't affect students in need. Doesn't affect free lunch. It doesn't affect reduced price lunch. That price remains the same. 30 cents for breakfast, 40 cents for lunch is the reduced price. Free is free. So it impacts students that have the economic ability to pay. We also need to continue to build the fund balance up because, you know, each kitchen is, you know, Clinton Elementary's kitchen has a million dollars' worth of equipment in it, and it's aged. And we need to get prepared to replace some of that. So that's why I can, I can suggest that we increase the prices. It's your decision, obviously, but in good faith, I think that it's the right thing to do. We're not trying to award money or make a lot of money, you know, we're just trying to be responsible for the long term. And kinda the give was keeping breakfast prices the same, encouraging that participation, which is what we want.
And where can you get a lunch for $3.10?
I agree.
Clinton Elementary's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, it may not have been like when we were at school, big baked potatoes. But there's a lot of requirements now.
Where did you go to school?
Oh, they haven't got a baked potato.
Oh.
We go square pizza, like five days a week.
Well.
Was that when you went to your elementary school?
In my elementary, yeah. In any event, yeah, it's, I don't think that's unreasonable. We've, anytime that we've increased, and you guys would hear from your constituents, I've never heard complaints. I've had some staff complaining about.
$5.
The lunch, but that's not what we're here for. We're here for the kids. Sorry, I'll be quiet now, Kelly.
What was the staff last year?
It was still $5. Well, yeah, for special meals, and breakfast was $3.75, lunch is $5.00. That hasn't changed. We haven't touched staff in several years.
Any further questions or comments from Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our breakfast and lunch pricing as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our Amtrak contract amendment number one. Oh.
Airmark. Yeah, sorry about that.
So before he gets into the Airmark contract, just to let you know that, you know, Oak Ridge should use Airmark for 26 years. And so them getting Clinton City on board, it was a great partnership because they could share the same management for both, for both school systems. We are required every five years to RFP, and after 26 years, Airmark did not win the RFP for Oak Ridge City Schools. And so it went with a competitor that is called SFE. And so Airmark has been committed. We are a smaller school system, but Airmark has been very vocal about being committed to remaining in Clinton City Schools. While they have done some staffing changes, and Jen Taylor, who we've worked with ever since we began our work with Airmark, she has received a promotion in Texas, so she will be relocating. And now we have our very own chef. Chef Eric is going to be the official chef for Airmark, and then he will also oversee the three schools. And so they will move their headquarters from Oak Ridge City to Clinton Elementary School up where the tech office is, where their kind of temporary office was. So we will have a chef on site. That will be positive for us, but that's just a different kind of setup with management that they have. And then Scott, I'll let you talk about the specifics of our contract amendment.
So I was a little nervous when things were happening with Oak Ridge and Airmark. And I got on the phone fairly quickly, said, where's our renewal? I want that. And so this is the, there's a memo in there that kinda outlines the renewal. 2022, 23, fiscal year, school year, was what's called our base contract year. We RFP the agreement. It's a five-year agreement, but it's really a one-year agreement with four renewals. And each year, if they don't wanna renew, we have to RFP it again. So it's really not a five-year agreement. It's a five-year agreement to agree. So the first renewal is what we have before us for next school year. That's amendment number one. And that's where the CPI increase, it's the Consumer Price Index for food away from home. I can't remember if it's rural or urban, but it's December of 22, to, sorry, December of 21 to December of 22, the increase. That increase is the increase they're allowed to use, so they're always a year, a year and a half behind. Given that, it's probably gonna be another 8% next year, because of what we're in now. But we, the USDA rates are also gonna go up with inflation. And so I feel comfortable that we're not gonna experience an economic impact necessarily from the Airmark increase, because our USDA increase and our paid lunches have increased to kinda get us more of a break even on those. The last paragraph in my memo says that I recommend we approve this, and it still needs state agency approval. Long story short, Airmark used the wrong Consumer Price Index, so I had to send them the correct CPI. Took another couple of weeks, but they finally approved it today, a couple hours ago. So we're, we are good to go for next year, and these are the accurate amounts. We have a meal equivalent, and what that means is, what does it cost us for them to produce a breakfast, a lunch, a snack? A la carte is a little confusing. We have a gross margin of 5.5%. That's, we make 5.5% on every dollar of product that they sell. It's not our product, it's their product, and they give us 5.5%. That, to me, kinda pays for the cooler for the ice cream, the freezer for the ice cream, that type of thing. But again, the food is not ours. The food is Airmark's. The labor is Airmark's. The only thing that is ours is the facility. So given that, I'd recommend that you allow me to sign off on that contract and approve it.
We have a recommendation to approve Airmark's amendment number one contract.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
Can I just ask some questions?
You may.
You know, we don't have a lot of constituents come to us with issues about anything. I think the only thing that I've ever heard are people's concern that a kid's balance gets too high, and then they don't get anything, where they get a piece of toast, and I said, we don't do that. And how do we make sure that happens? Because, like you said, it's just our facility, and we're sort of hands-off everything else.
There, there's a couple of things that have hit the paper in the last year, and actually, some legislators are talking about it, and it's just not accurate. One, when a student goes through the breakfast line or the lunch line, no one knows if they're free, reduced, or paid. No one knows.
Do they not get tickets?
Nope. There's no ticket. It's all, it doesn't even like flash up, paid, free. It's just a student name, and they get charged for the meal. So the point-of-sale system says, that's where the calculation is made, kind of in the back room on a server. It says, all right, this kid eats for free, so nothing gets charged to their account. This kid eats for reduced, so we're gonna charge the student 40 cents. Or this kid is paid, and we're gonna charge the student $3.10 for a lunch. So the parents put money on the account, free, reduced, or paid, because there's a la carte. So that's one of the misconceptions that is out there. And then the second one is kids that have built up a balance. And most of that is kids that are paid, because if you eat for free, you shouldn't run a balance. The only thing we don't do, like a. The only thing we don't do, I could back to that, but for lunches, we don't distinguish whether, they still get a lunch, if they owe three hundred dollars, they, they get a lunch. And it's the same lunch, it's not an alternative lunch. It's
That's part of our agreement with Airmark. As we have talked to them, they are very much about wanting to implement our philosophy and our expectations, and we've made that very clear to them, that regardless of the account, they get a regular, they get a regular lunch.
Airmark doesn't care.
The only thing that we don't do is if they have an astronomical balance, we don't do a la carte. We don't allow them to purchase extra things, but they do get the, the full, complete meal that every other child would get.
Airmark doesn't care. If they serve a meal, we pay for it, Clinton City Schools does. The student doesn't necessarily, they pay us. So we are the ones that carry the balance if they have a high balance. And as Kelly was talking about, I call it the grandpa rule. If a kid, if grandpa gives a kid a dollar to buy an ice cream and they have a fifty-dollar account balance, we're going to let them use that dollar to buy the ice cream. If a kid goes through the line and says, I want an ice cream, and they have a fifty-dollar balance and no method to pay for that particular ice cream because grandpa didn't give them any money that day, then they can't buy the ice cream. That's the only time that we say, no, you can't add to your account balance via a la carte. But we don't, if you give your son or daughter money to purchase something, we allow that particular cash transaction to happen.
No, that goes towards your collection account.
Yeah, no, yeah, we weren't going to, and, and, you know, because a lot of times, grandpa will drop a kid off, grandma can give the kid some ice cream money, and we want to.
Yeah, and we're very committed to keeping the kid out of it because the, the child has no control over whether mom and dad let a balance. So now Harper Maxwell is part of our cafeteria and she, she does a wonderful job of calling parents. And a lot of times, just they don't know, they don't know that the balance is, you know, added up. And, you know, we've got a report of everything that's bought on every day, so all of it is, you know, there for us to show to parents. And she'll work with parents if it gets out of control and can, can you pay five dollars a week, can you pay six dollars a week, you know? We have donors that will say, help a kid. And she was like, I'll put in twenty dollars, if you can commit to five dollars a week, we'll help you get this paid off. But she's real good about working with the parents. But then in those phone calls, what we find out many times is, well, my situation has changed, I've lost a job. And then that gives us the opportunity to say, oh my goodness, now you would qualify for free and reduced lunch, let's send home the form and let us help you get on this to where lunches aren't a burden on you. And so she does it in a great, just very compassionate, genuine, genuine way. But our, our goal is to always keep the kid out of the mix because they don't need the stress of what mom and dad either aren't able to do or aren't choosing to do.
And she does a good job. I know, I know my wife, Vicki, got an ice cream or something one day and had a balance and Harper tracked her down.
Oh, she tracks down the teachers too, yes. Yes. And sometimes we have a harder time with teachers paying off their balance. Not your wife, not your wife, but sometimes, not out of, you know, just teachers are busy getting their kids there and then they get to the cafeteria and they've forgotten their purse and, so we're not going to let a teacher go hungry either.
If you ever have a parent say that any of that's, the items that we talked about,
We want to know.
I can guarantee you that that didn't happen and then
I've always said that's not going to happen, and I just wanted to make sure of.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Stayed informed on all that, you know?
You did good, you're correct.
Thank you.
Great question.
Any further questions or comments? I believe on the floor, we have a motion and a second, correct? All right, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our director's evaluation, Molly Scarborough, once again, was absolutely wonderful in collecting the evaluations and everything that went along with that, calling everyone, touching base. She does a wonderful job, she's a great asset to the schools, and I just want to thank her for doing all of that. In the end, another great evaluation for our director of schools, Ms. Kelly. Everything that was in the evaluation always consistently meets expectations or exceeds all of our expectations. There was no marks and usually meets, seldom meets, or never meets expectations. And a lot of great comments as to the wonderful job that you're doing, Kelly, that we greatly appreciate. Comments similar to great spokesperson for Clinton City Schools, excellent leader and partner in advancing the schools, best director in the business, exceeds all expectations in her role as a director, true professional with a heart for the school's students and staff. And, you know, I think, I think everybody, everybody is on the same page and we are greatly, greatly appreciative of the, of the work that you do and keeping Clinton in your heart and, and everything. Job well done.
Well, thank you, this is always one of the most uncomfortable things that I do all year long. But it is true, it is truly a joy. I go back to a South Clinton parking lot when Vicki was leaving and Tim Bible and I stood under a street light as I looked at Dr. Bible and said, I don't know that I can do this, I don't know that I'm ready for this, I need Vicki to stay, I need Vicki to stay. And he was very, very encouraging and you all have, you all have really been the reason that this school system is able to be so successful because I would not do this for anybody else other than, than what we have right here. You all are always so willing to support all of us, knowing that sometimes we're going to get it right and sometimes we're going to get it wrong, and that's just part of what we do. But you all are always so willing to let us try new things and, and see if it works. But I, there's never been a time that I have not felt supported by every single person sitting here. And that is so unusual when I go to director meetings and hear some of the stories that my friends are, are having to struggle with. We truly do have something, something special here. And Clinton does have my heart, Clinton City Schools, absolutely, absolutely has my heart. There will come a time where you'll be ready for me to leave, and when that happens, you have to promise to let me know. Until that time, I will gladly stay and fight for our sweet kids. I appreciate all the kind words.
Thank you for, a job well done. All right, we do need to approve this evaluation officially, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved, so moved.
Second by everybody?
Everybody.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on, state law says that we have to have a director on a maximum of a four-year contract is the maximum we can give. It can be anything less than that, but it might, it cannot exceed a four-year contract. As we end June, we will be taking one year off of your contract and you will be currently on a three-year contract. But it's my intent to keep you here as long as we can, so I would love to entertain a motion to approve, Kelly, for a one-year extension of our contract to the state maximum level. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we'll go to reports and information. Any reports?
Okay, first of all, thank you, thank you very much. That, that means, that means the world, that you all believe in me and believe in our people. I will always say that my daddy taught me that you surround yourself with people smarter than you, and that is exactly what I have done with the people sitting, with the people sitting out there. So they, while I may be the face of it, they are the ones
They have that one with no sense over there.
They may not have, you're smarter than me, you don't have as much common sense as me, but you are smarter than me. All right, here's
I'll second that.
Okay, a couple of fun updates for Clinton City Schools. First of all, Danny going, stand up. So Danny, it's, this is his last couple of weeks with us, so this is his last official school board meeting. I started to tell him he didn't have to come tonight, and then I thought, no, I want the school board to lay eyes on you one more time to see if we can do any fun jokes about colored printers or copies or, or anything fun that we might want to talk about. But Danny has just been, Danny, how many years have you been in Clinton City Schools?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, so he was here when I came here. And it has just been a joy getting to know him on both a professional and a personal level. He is a very, very dear friend of mine. He has personally walked me through lots of, lots of life struggles and he just is a calming force to our, to our group. And we have just been blessed to have him. I do have a funny story to tell. We give away a retirement gift at the end of the year, and it's always been a birdhouse for years. And the sweet man that has made birdhouses for us for years is no longer making them. So we had stockpiled some and, but we didn't have enough for everybody that retired this year. So we moved to a formal rocking chair for all of the teachers who retired. But because Kim Leach and him are leaving at the end of June, I gave them their choice if they wanted a birdhouse or a rocking chair. And so Kim thought long and hard, so I asked Danny this question and he pauses for a second. And I was like, well Danny, really, I know this probably presents more for Lisa, your wife, than it is for you. If you need to consult with her about which one you prefer, you can get back to me, you don't have to answer me right now. And in typical male fashion, he said, I'll take the birdhouse, I can get it home easier. True. So Danny got the birdhouse. He was able to choose his, to choose his color. But Danny, I so appreciate, and I just want publicly to know how much Clinton City Schools appreciates all that you have done. You will always be known as the trailblazer for making us a one-to-one district, for teaching me what cat six and ram and mibs and all of that fun language that now I can pretend like I know what it is. You have taught me so much. But from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you've done for Clinton City Schools, you are truly going to be missed.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure. And I couldn't find a better director to work for than Kelly, and I will go know that. And do pre-fit school board, employed me over the last fourteen years, and it really has been a pleasure to work here, it really has.
He has some fun stories about some of the classes that he does for us that maybe we can share offline sometime. We won't take time to share that now, but, but there will be another open position other than technology for some class instruction that we're going to have to find a mature person to take over, so.
Thank you so much for job well done. And I know when you came here, our systems were in disarray. You did a great job, my friend, thank you.
Okay, a few other updates. We're finishing our, I put third week of summer learning camps, it's not our third week, it's our second week, I guess I'm just wishful thinking, it's actually our second full week of summer camps. We had one hundred and forty-seven students enrolled in kindergarten boost camp through rising seventh grade. Most of our participation is in our kindergarten boost camp, we have forty students, so both of those classes are maxed out with rising kindergartners. And then as expected, our rising fourth grade with the third grade retention law, those two are our heaviest attended grade levels. We are only averaging about eighty-eight students per day. That is a decrease in attendance in what we have seen in previous summers. I think a lot of that is due to the fact that the COVID scare is kind of over now, so parents feel like that their, their children have kind of caught up. I think that is playing into it. And then also, we had a large number of parents sign their kid up for summer school anticipating they may need it for TCAP, and we encouraged them to do that. And then when it came back as proficient, or they took the retake, or they got the appeal, they've chosen not to participate in summer school. So that's kind of where that attendance and membership discrepancy is coming from. One of the most exciting things is, is that we took advantage of a state transportation grant, because knowing that third grade was going to be mandatory, we did not want transportation to keep any kid from attending. And so we have an actual school bus picking up at Clinton Elementary in South Clinton and transporting back and forth to and from summer school with the teachers on there to, to help supervise. And that has been the highlight for about eight of our kids. They think it is fabulous being able to ride the, the bus to and from school, so
It's a yellow limousine.
It's a yellow limousine because we don't get to do that in Clinton City Schools, so it's a treat. So that has been interesting and fun, and we were happy to provide that for eight of our kids to be able to come. As I told you all before the meeting, after TCAP, our retake, and the appeals process, approximately eighty-eight percent of our third graders will be able to be promoted to fourth grade without any sort of intervention. Only four of those students fell in the below basic that are having to attend summer school and do the school tutoring. So while we didn't really agree with the law, I think that it tapped out to where the kids who need summer school, I think the saving grace, and that's what I told Bill Dunn today, was the, the appeal process allowing us to use the universal screener in anybody who is forty percent or above. That hit, we had, what, about twenty kids did the appeal? And then interestingly, we had, Jamie, was it thirty kids took the retake? Thirty, thirty-five kids took the retake? And ten of those became proficient, and then two actually moved from below basic to approaching. So it changed the trajectory of twelve of our kids. And I think across the state, they've been very surprised at how many kids have shown up proficient on the retake. Jamie and I feel like a lot of that is due to stamina. It was a thirty to forty-minute test versus a two to three-day test where some of your subtests were ninety minutes long. And so we do feel like the stamina with our eight, nine-year-olds plays a big piece into their performance. And so I'm very tickled that we encouraged our parents to take advantage of the retake that served them well, so. I said the CES sewage repair project, I guess I should have said wastewater line project, Scott, thank you, I took your nicer version of that. It is underway. As you know, we've got a piece of the terrazzo here, but they anticipate that they're going to wrap up that project hopefully by the second week of July. We're in front of the bathroom and at the bottom of the steps, they have had to, I thought it was going to be a much smaller piece of the terrazzo, it's a fairly, it's a fairly significant little rectangle there. And we, our first thought was we'll just carpet it, and then when you look at it, the carpet is in front of the boys' bathroom. We do not want to carpet in front of the boys' bathroom for obvious reasons. And so we are actually going to concrete it, but then we can paint that concrete. And so we're going to, that's what, we'll paint an emblem, Clinton City Schools, Clinton Elementary School, something on that concrete to make it look like it's meant to be there with a border. And so we anticipate doing that, they're going to bring in painters to do that for us, but we'll have to let the concrete sit and cure for several months. And so it'll probably be fall breaker, December, before we get the painting done. So it will just be ugly concrete for the first few weeks of school.
I think Gail Hunt would be available.
She could do a mural, a mural in the concrete, could you make that happen for us, Joey?
She's your friend.
If you could make that happen. We are also in the process of painting and installing sound panels in the Clinton Elementary cafeteria. If you've had the joy of participating in lunch there, it is a very stimulating environment. And it will always be stimulating just because of the number of kids in there, but we feel like if we can do some sound panels, we're looking at putting some on the wall, and also they make them now in the tiles. And so we had our consultant come out on Wednesday and he's going to work up some pricing and some different things that we could do, but our goal is to have that in, hopefully by the time kids come back, if not soon after that. The South Clinton flooring project is almost complete. When I checked on that earlier this week, they only had the primary hallway to go. And Scott and I, we weren't happy with the way those lights, the light gray looked in the hallways. And so we kind of got creative with the plan, and they had already purchased the free replacement. So knowing that our goal is to replace all of the classrooms, we allowed them to replace the cafeteria. We kept the, kept it in the new area because once you get in a classroom, you don't notice the defects quite as much. And then we used all the remainder to do four additional classrooms. And then we purchased a darker floor to go in the hallways. And I'll send you all a picture, but it looks much better, it is beautiful. And so they are about to finish up that project. And even in the cafeteria, you can definitely tell the difference between the new, the replacement that they have purchased for us for free. The RFP for the North Clinton Playground has been issued, it should have been in the paper yesterday for the second week. We hope that we'll have the RFP process done by the end of July, and then as soon as that is done, we will rock and roll to get that in as soon as we can get the equipment in. We are still moving on the Clinton Elementary Playground in the lower parking lot, we just have to create the additional parking spaces for staff first. Scott is working with the City of Clinton on that, so we're just kind of at a lot of people's mercy for that getting done before we can move on the playground, but that is in, that is in action. I'm sure you have heard that Commissioner Penny Schwinn has stepped down as our education commissioner of the state of Tennessee. Bill Lee has named a lady out of Texas, her last name is Reynolds, so she'll be Commissioner, Reynolds is going to take over on July first. We have had a lot of our very consistent veteran Department of Ed people resign and they'll be leaving at the end of June, and that's kind of expected because of, you know, the commissioner is going to bring in her new cabinet. And so we did lose a lot of our very dedicated people to our district that really served us well, they have chosen to leave at the end of June. So I do, there's going to be lots of turnover, lots of changes, so we're eager to see what happens with this change in leadership. And then just for the general public to know central And then just for the general public to know, Central Office is remaining open all summer from 8:00 to 3:30 each day, so city residents can come by at any time if they've not registered their children to attend. And then the staff, oh my goodness, this is going to make, so, so hard to say, but the staff will return on July 27th, which is crazy. Sneak peek will be held on August the 2nd, which is a Wednesday, from 3:30 to 5:30. The first half-day school on the 3rd, first full day of school is on the 4th, and then guys will be back up and running for a new school year. So that concludes my report. Any questions for me?
I had heard recently that Crossroads Christ Fellowship, they had a school there, and they recently sold that church, and the school closed. Have you seen any students from that?
We saw, they closed their private school a few years ago. South Clinton saw an influx of their school. What they closed was a daycare.
It was a daycare, okay.
So it was the daycare that closed. And as my understanding, Anderson County Schools has bought that property, and that will become a new Claxton School down, down the road, so.
Okay.
Yes, but no, we didn't get any of the, the daycares, but when the private school closed, yes.
We did, okay.
And really, those are great kids. They have been a great addition to South Clinton.
Yeah.
Yeah, great kids, great families.
We'll get them in the pre-cadence.
All right. Any further questions or comments?
I wanted to share something that I found out today that has some little interest for us. I think last month I talked about Augusta Ridley's class coming, making a presentation to Historic Downtown. Did I, did we do that last month? They came in and worked in conjunction with the high school kids that were, that were heading up this tree planting project, and the high school kids won their contest. So in the, in the social media promotion of all of this, one of our Clinton grads, and I think a friend of yours, Brian Copeland...
Yes, yes.
Is a Realtor in Nashville.
Yes.
Messaged me and said, "You guys should apply for a National Association of Realtors placemaking grant for this project." We said, "Okay." So we quickly met with the local association from Knoxville, because they had to be the ones to apply for the grant for us. We got it in like right at the deadline, and somehow, somehow, we found out today that we won.
Wow.
So it's $7,500.
Wow.
And the major, and most of that can go towards the South Clinton kids' art project that they had designed. They had designed a sculpture to go there in the park by the library, so now we actually have that much money to act, make that come...
Where that sculpture can come to...
That sculpture can become a reality thanks to that grant and the kids. Those kids will be able to see that, that idea actually put into action. So we just found, we found out today.
Does Miss Ridley know this yet?
We, we just found out. I don't, I don't know if she knows yet, because we just found out, and I wanted to, I wanted to do it here and tell you guys.
That is so exciting. That is awesome.
So that little project between Clinton High School kids and Clinton City kids, those kids have netted $12,500 for the city for that little project.
Wow. That is amazing. That is amazing. That is great news. I can't wait for Ms. Ridley to find out, and the kids.
That's awesome.
Well, you can't get any better than that.
What kind of sculptures are going to be, Joey?
Well, the kids designed a turtle, because that little area, 100 years ago, was called Terrapin Hill, because some little story about turtles that got stranded there when the river would back up into the, into Town Springs that we all know and love so much. So they designed a turtle laying on its back, reading a book...
Oh, wow.
To go there in front of the library. And they researched different materials, what types of materials would be best to make a sculpture out of. Augusta did an extensive lesson with them on this. So they not only designed the actual sculpture, made a model for us, researched the materials and decided which metals they, they thought it should be made out of, so. It was a really good STEM lesson for them.
So she was our sixth-grade teacher at South that was willing to let us combine classes, because she didn't want the children to have to get used to somebody else in the middle of the year. And we asked her in the spring what her dream job was, and she said, "My dream job would be to be an art teacher." And so she is going to move into North and South and be the art teacher for North and South, and I'm super excited that she's going to take some of these concepts that she's done with our South Clinton kids and then move it to also to North Clinton and let our North Clinton kids experience some of that, so.
It was super impressive to see all of them, all these kids be involved in this, but the fact that we were, have been able to act on it so quickly has been a surprise. Just these grants and things have come through for us.
Wow. You can't say no to kids.
I really...
You shouldn't be able to say no to kids.
I don't know what our angle was, but it had to have been kids that got it for us.
That's amazing. And thanks to Brian for sending it...
Yeah. It was his...
Our way.